What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session. Today we're gonna be looking at small blind limp, big blind raise, small blind call at thirty big blind. How to play post flop from the big blind. So here, we have the small blind calling range against our rates. And this is our first flop, so I believe. We don't have. Hmm, yeah, we can check here, right? Because we don't have flush interaction and then this is possibly our best show down here.
Yeah, I think I'm always just range betting small here on this ace height dried texture.
I agree, I'm just betting everything small.
So one or?
I would go quarter in game.
I agree.
Yeah, that's it.
Uh, well. So I think you would maybe defend the ones with back doors and like theory, and if you were gonna let one go, this would have to be it.
I think you, yeah.
This one calls.
You have to call, you're too high up in range.
Yeah, it's pretty wild, man. Like I, I'm never calling this in game, but.
Think if you go out there and call this kind of stuff, you're not gonna win.
Okay, so now you're ahead of his bluffs. So like if you're calling the flop, you're calling the turn here, like you might just put it in.
Nah nah nah, keep the bluff set. You made your bet?
Yeah, night, night.
It's blind against blinds, so we gotta be sticky, right? And pray he doesn't show anything.
Oh, shucks, never would've guessed.
Very shocking.
Uh, okay, so.
The same, that's small, we have flush interaction.
Yeah, I think so too, I would bet small here.
Although nine and eight really connects well, right, with him? But.
I think you will start having some more polar components to your betting range, but um, I mean, you got your best second pair. You get the backdoor flush.
Maybe we check here, because we do, what do we get value from a worst eight, maybe?
Worst eights.
A four, a straight draw, any flush draw, you get.
Five, six.
Yeah, but.
Five, six.
And then we can about be value betting ourselves against a nine.
Three, four.
You, you're checking, the eights you're checking gonna be like eight, three off and eight, two off. Like, that you decided to raise, you're gonna be betting most of your eights.
Yeah, especially this one, like, because you just beat all the other eights, I would be really surprised if this is checking.
Okay, so let's give it a bet.
Looky there, I'm surprised.
Hey, it smashes his, his range pretty well, right?
Right, so you're gonna need to be really polar here for pulling this into a check range, I think. So I would expect to see a lot of checking and big bets. So yeah, you got twelve percent, or you got eleven percent going full pot, you do have another ten percent going quarter. But um, it's really just a check range, you have a lot of checking, very polar spot, that's probably why this is sliding out.
Eight, four, king with the flush draw, but if the nine was a king.
Oh, the, you're saying you wanna change the nine to a king, that would be a different composition, I think you would have a, you'd have a more distributed strategy than less.
Few bets more often.
Yeah, you can check it pretty quick, I think, um, but yeah, I would agree, that's gonna change the betting composition quite a bit.
I mean, I think we're gonna start betting this hand small.
Yeah, 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 I would agree, so yeah, immediately you see the betting frequency spike up. About ten per, ten fifteen percent, and it's all in small betting, small bets now.
Yep. So we check a lot here?
Yeah.
Now, now, now.
I uh.
Easy call, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, what? I'm not doing that.
That's offensive.
Easy jam.
I'm offended right now.
I'm pretty surprised by that, I guess he just has so many strong equity combo he draws here. That um.
It feels like, if I would see somebody do that, I would say this is terrible. They're just turning your marginal main into a bluff, no?
Well, okay, so I do have a question, if you go back to the flop. What, does he have a donking composition, like a donking component to his range, and how nine X is, how nine X concentrated is that donking?
So, name a river that you get to call when he jams.
I mean, like, I think if you're sticking around for the turn, you probably continue like on, on a lot of the bricks, so like a deuce of clubs or something.
He's betting big a lot on this board.
Okay, so it's here, check this out, this is interesting and probably a piece of why. Uh, I can't see all of your GTO wizard, by the way, so it's.
Is it?
Okay, there you go, is this on the flop?
This is.
Okay, okay, so this is his donking range.
Seventy-five percent, so a big bet.
Right, so this is probably why you jam the turn a lot.
Yeah, he has like no nines.
He's got like no nine X because of the donking component, so like, what you would really need to do here to get a. A more accurate representation of what that turn, turn action is, is like.
Lock, lock.
Yeah, he would.
This is not happening, right?
Not, not by, not by your average, you know, twenty-five dollar reg, it's not. So if you were to lock this spot, I would wager that uh, you're not gonna be just shipping it in on the turn. Because of this, we have like close to the effective nuts on the turn. In reality, I don't think that's the case.
Oh.
Uh-oh.
Um, mm, 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 nine, eight, four, we have something like that.
Yeah, ten, nine, two would probably be a pretty close representation, I mean, I don't think it would be that different.
They have a lot less tens and nines, don't they?
Nine, eight, nine, eight deuce, I think is okay, or you got nine, eight, four there, it's just um, the suits are reversed. They, they do, I think though, I think it plays the same way with ten, nine deuce. Like, I think you're still gonna see insane amounts of donk on ten high.
You mean, well, let's look at this one first.
Yeah, nine, eight.
Well, actually, you know what? Tell me what, look at this. Uh, four of hearts, we say. Okay, so here it's nine of spades. Eight of spades, and then four of hearts. Okay. See real quick, okay, how long does it take to ground?
If you run this one spot, it's probably not gonna be too crazy.
But I wanna see, oh, it's a blind versus blind spot.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a limp check though, and it's kinda shallow.
Let's see their first loop, actually, okay, so it's looping, we're gonna see their first loop, how long it takes, then we're gonna node lock it. And then. We're gonna see how it changes. For now. Go all in.
Right, so, this is an interesting nuance, like if you didn't put that piece of the puzzle together. Um, you're gonna be out there just probably losing EV on the turn if you're implementing that strategy.
Definitely, right?
Watch me.
Yeah, yeah, but, but the solver told me to jam the turn with second pair.
No, that's small, that's small.
That's small on the sideboard, right?
I like betting small here, yeah.
You wanna have a spade on our hand?
I honestly, I don't even really care, like, I'm betting small because. I just wanna bet the texture.
Okay, that works. Often does range bet here.
Should be pretty heavy if eight, five off is making it into the mix. Yeah, like sixty-five percent of the time, lots of small bets.
Yeah, okay.
Even got some ones slipping in. Yeah, have a nice day.
Alright, alright.
Okay, not that long.
Yeah, not too bad. Same story here, I'm just gonna bet very small. Alright, Joker.
Hi, bro.
Raise this every time?
You're actually supposed to call.
Why?
Ah.
What's the game plan there?
Why? I mean, you're double, the, double backdoor straight draws, but still, like. That's crazy.
Alright, so range wise, I wouldn't be surprised if we have like some larger bets in this range, I think this one probably makes a pretty good. Check back. I don't know, I would maybe bet the ones with the backdoor flush.
Because if you look here at this calling range, okay, it's either it's gonna connect very well with the eighth and the sixth, either it's gonna smash it or I have just a little bit above it.
So if you're betting your backdoor flush draw hands, what, uh, what size are you going?
Oh, I would go large.
And what do you do versus raise?
Folds.
Yeah, so I feel like that's kind of a disaster, so I'd rather bet clubs and just check my backdoor flush draw hands.
Maybe.
We're just about to say exact same as what you.
Yeah, you guys.
Makes more sense, if you're gonna fold with the backdoors, you wanna check them back a bit more and just betting no equity hands, right?
Yeah, maybe you guys are right, maybe I got it backwards, so maybe you would bet large with this one, okay, it is checking, so if you take a peek at the range. What does it do with the backdoor fleshy ones?
I mean, this might just be like betting small with everything, though.
Yeah, then.
Maybe.
It's pretty disconnected, even though it's eight high.
It feels like eight, eight, six, eight, six deuce is gonna have big bets, but maybe I'm wrong, a little bit, not crazy, right?
Maybe not as much blind on blinds, maybe like, first is the big blind, you wanna have big bets.
So these guys are just basically checking, uh, checking full, Jack ten though. Is where you're seeing some of it come in and it is preferring the backdoors. With the additional bit of equity, it's got a little more connectivity with the eight though, so I mean, I, I can kinda get this. And it gets a few more better hands to fold, like you're getting queens to fold now.
I'm under the impression that on the flop, it almost always dislikes the, the one that missed, are you, do you agree next?
Um.
On the flop, on the first three, it almost always dislikes this.
It depends on SPR, like as you get shallower. You're gonna wanna, you're gonna wanna bet your clubs first, the deeper you are, the more you bet the backdoors.
Maybe that's it, I, 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 I do know, I do agree, like, there is times when the, the machine does prefer, like, the less equity. Without the flush draw. Uh, so did we bet?
If we bet, Jack ten with the backdoor flush draw, we have to continue to erase. So we have two overs, backdoor flush draw, backdoor straight draw, that hand's strong enough to continue, which is why I think it's betting.
Yeah.
You should look at, well, maybe nine, it's not, it's not a big deal, um, I don't know, I would maybe stab here small sometimes. I don't know if I really wanna show down queen high.
I'm checking.
Checking's not bad, I, I mean, it's gonna be very high check, checking's definitely gonna be good here. But I, I, I just might slot in twenty-five or fifteen, or thirteen sometimes.
We're just beating all his queen highs.
Don't you wanna bet more often with clubs here, because you don't block hearts and spades that are gonna fold?
Well, the one check checks, so it didn't go bet call, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, he's got, yeah, exactly, he's got full range.
Doesn't matter when I go check two.
Yeah, we still got full frequency of everything, right?
If it went bet call, he'd be continuing with backdoor flush draws, but we didn't bet, so we didn't narrow his range at all, so it doesn't matter that we have cards.
Yeah, I like check a lot.
Yeah, we have our best queen high.
If you check the turn, you're definitely checking this river.
River and when against like queen six. No, damn it.
Or lose to king seven.
Or that.
Uh, huh, queen high. There's some connect. Okay, I, I mean, we're betting, I'm just torn if we wanna go very big or not.
I like twenty-five or fifty, no bigger than that.
Yeah, we just, uh, we gotta pip above queen, so all of us queen X are just gonna pay us, but maybe you don't need to go big if you're doing that. Maybe small, giving him a little rope to check raise. Maybe that's good.
At thirty big blinds, do we bet big more or more often or less often with the spades compared to rainbow?
As opposed to deep stack, as opposed to like?
Right, in this, in this situation, so if we look at this board, queen five, three with two spades. Do we bet this large more often or less often with both range in our hand compared to five, three rainbow?
One, one portion of your questions, Scotty, the spade makes us bet more often.
I think it makes you bet smaller too, though, like you're kinda protected, like you.
I think another portion of your question, queen low, low, it's gonna bet small.
Wait, are you asking if the flush draw on the board makes us bet differently?
He, he's asking if the flush interaction drives up our bet size or down our bet size.
It usually drives it up.
Yes.
But here, it doesn't really apply because the five and the three are too bricky, it's just high, low, low.
Gotcha.
I don't know if they are bricky, he's gonna have some like.
You think we have much sizing up here? I think it's just mostly a bit small.
I think you, I think you definitely will.
Yeah, I think you'll have a portion of the range of size up.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, this is a good bet small.
I, I, as we go, I think we should review that, that heuristic, because Matt Affleck in a webinar recently said the opposite, which really surprised me.
JK.
Yeah, but I'm looking at it, um, in some other situations and some cash situations and finding that it's, that the heuristic is the opposite. But the flush draw boards get bet smaller than the, uh, rainbow boards.
Uh, daily, depends on a bunch of stuff, if you're betting this is big blind, you're just looking at C betting, it's a high connected board. Rainbow, you're gonna bet smaller, flush draw, you're gonna bet hot, bigger, for sure.
I think, I, I actually, I think that's backwards in a lot of spots.
I'm just saying that, so, let's review that, let's review that heuristic as we go, um, because it'll be, it won't be the same on every board, it won't be as simple.
This is, this is a blind versus blind scenario.
Yeah, I can't, I can't really speak to the blind versus blind scenario.
It's not gonna span well to the rest of the game tree.
Yeah.
I think what Matt Affleck means, uh, Scotty is that, uh, when you own the button, you have the overpair. Uh, you have all the overpairs, so that's why you can size up sometimes, but not small blind versus big blind, I don't think that was, he's talking about.
Well, I mean, it's, there, there's some analogous aspects there, Roger, like, um. You're uncapped, opening from a steel position, you're uncapped, opening, raising from the big blind here. Because it's just a limp call range, so the, some, some of those aspects could apply, I would think, but you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I think I watched the same video, so that's, but go on, sorry.
No, it's all good, so we, we see some of the donking behavior here, it's a little less frequent in your sim, but it's still enough to consider, so like, just. Lock out the donks and, uh, let's see how that turn behaves. Are you, uh, is this a sixty deep sim or a thirty deep sim?
This is thirty big blinds deep.
Good, 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 good. Yeah, so you would just, yeah, nuke all of them.
And see what it wants to do?
Yeah, the ones, yeah, that's why you gotta nuke them, that's why you gotta nuke them all, otherwise, it's just gonna like. Make it part of the strategy, yeah, there you go. Yeah, now you gotta run it again, shouldn't take very long this time, though. Yeah, so you're right, so small. Alright, I'm going like mucho grande now, I'm probably clicking this, to be honest. Like, it, it's not even messing around, it's just like, I'm all in. Uh, I think I definitely wanna bet this. Alright, so let's think about this, what is the floor of, we, we have three X, we are definitely concentrated in three X with our polar raising range. How concentrated is he in three X, does he have offsuit threes really? Not really. So I definitely think this is gonna be like a, a betski. Yeah, he's a guy, he's got like nothing, he's got like. He just doesn't have a lot of three X here, while I think we have like all the offsuit three Xs.
Pair boards, it's just that one chip, right?
Yeah, small, for sure, yeah, you don't, definitely don't need to polarize or anything.
Go down, check back.
Well, okay, so let's think about this, what is his queen X doing here, is he calling, check calling a lot of queen X, or is he check raising a lot of queen X?
Mixing.
Mixing, for sure, for sure, it's mixing.
Did you, did you say on the paired boards, we do a lot of betting of one bu, one big blind in this situation?
Uh, we bet small, just bet small, either one or small, doesn't.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be one, but the, it, it kinda depends on the.
Other scenarios, like button versus big blind, but here, blind against blind, it's, it's picking small, it's not.
I kinda wanna bet again, I guess is what I'm, is what I'm alluding to here.
Checking, you pick up equity, you don't need to bet.
I wanna bet fifty percent here.
If no more money goes in the pot, we're gonna win, a lot of money goes in the pot, we're gonna lose.
Yeah, uh, it's still betting half of this time. I have a good hand now, we can check and win.
I wanna bet, I wanna bet, like, it's, it seems like a good value bet, you've beat his like king highs, you beat his ace highs.
Yuck. Well, that's a thing.
He's gotta call you pretty wide here, so.
I guess your value here, eighty percent, that's very thin, I like that a lot, oh, very good.
Show the bluff. Oh, he's just got a queen that he really, really was slow with.
Uh-huh, yeah, you check, check, yeah, I know somebody who plays like that.
Hmm.
I wonder what I'll go on the next hand with the ten big blinds that I have that Galen doesn't.
Check.
So the three here. It doesn't connect too well with that, right?
No, but he's got five, seven, he's got eight X, he's got six, six, eight, six, seven, he. He's got a lot of stuff here, I just don't know how beneficial. Um, betting bottom pair is gonna be here, we have backdoor equity, we have backdoor straight equity, I kinda wanna protect my hand.
Uh, like, our hand doesn't wanna face a check raise.
Okay, okay, you guys are right. Checking again?
I'm feeling a little emboldened now, like, he's gonna have five X here sometimes. Maybe, or would he be betting his five X, I don't know, I kinda wanna bet now. Or do, or does it make sense?
You're.
Yeah.
Yeah, check.
No.
No, wants to bet, wants to bet. Call.
Oh, gross.
You're not getting away with that, I'm calling.
My man, my, my man just put us in the box.
Yeah, Greg, you can't put, you're not, no one's in the box, we're calling this.
Oh. I'm on.
Bro, one point four two, I'm calling this a game, I'm like, uh, uh, what is he, what is he repping?
Change your move.
Oh my goodness.
Oh.
You guys are sure?
He's, he's repping ace five, that's what he's repping.
We don't.
Which is silly.
We don't need to do this, guys.
This one, this one feels pretty crystal clear, like.
We don't need to do this.
Let's go to the deep end, we got our floaties on, uh, we're in the pool, oh, okay, I feel a little better now, but not by much. Just call, no, you don't need to bluff it, man, just call.
Four lining. Value, is it not, two pair, line against line?
Four liner, uh, B.
He's gonna have better two pairs sometimes, he's gonna have a straight sometime.
Wait, 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 what better two pair does he show you?
Four, six.
Eight, six.
Eight, six.
What worse does he call, is a, is a better question.
Yeah, that's another one, right? What worse does he call, he's gonna have three deuce here, maybe, three deuce suited?
I think he called every eight, every six.
I, uh, I, I just, I'm, I'm kinda with you guys. Yeah, I, I just, well, not blues, right, and it's like, it's, it's marginally better. I kinda wanna see what he shows down, though. King four.
He has to fold his four, but king six was calling.
Alright, what, quarter or thirteen percent, I'm, I'm okay with both. JK, he wants to do a lot of, uh, fifty. Uh, since we don't have a spade, I might size up a little bit here. He's gonna have a lot of nine, ten and jack X, so I think it's definitely, you don't wanna go too big, because you don't wanna blow him off of all of that.
I don't think spade is relevant for this hand class.
You don't think? He's, he's got suited shite.
I think if you have something like queen ten, you're, you're gonna, you've got something going on, you know? Then your suit matters, but for this hand class, it doesn't.
I was talking about his hands that he continues with.
Yeah.
Like a low ace. Ace, four, five.
Love the spade.
I'm gonna go fifty percent here a lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Even bigger, even bigger. I just didn't wanna blow him off an ace, alright, I'm just all in.
It never, it never ever falls in ace, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm sorry, I said ace, I didn't wanna blow him off a jack, oh, he just ripped the nuts.
Did you?
Love that call with king high on the turn, eh?
Right.
How could this happen?
Alright, this is an interesting one, alright, it doesn't look that interesting, but this is way more interesting. And it's interesting for the same reasons for node locking that other one, we don't have a lot of nine X in our raising range. And he has a lot of nine X in our raising, right, his raising or his calling range. So, um. We have a hand that really benefits from betting too, like, we got a backdoor spade, we got a gutty, we got eight high, we're blocking eight, nine.
See, my opinion here is that we have more.
Seven. We got more what?
More nines than him.
Bro, what are you talking about?
No.
Go look at the range, we are, we already covered this, we had, we do not have more nines than him. He's got all, look at, look, look, look at what we're doing pre-flop with all of our nine X, we don't got, we got like nothing. Compared to what he calls.
Look at this here.
Yeah, we got some, I'm not saying we don't got some.
And then look at this here. What do you think waits more? All this row of junk here? Or? These four suited hands? For sure, we got more nines, my man, look at this. No. You, you, that's, that doesn't, that doesn't overweight, that doesn't overweight his range, just because you have the low nine X, he has a high nine X.
But he's got like nine, eight suited.
Yeah, he has not, he has all the eight nines, he has, he has, like, all, all the other box are suited nine.
Nine, seven suited.
And then he has like the queen nine offsuit, king nine offsuit, jack nine offsuit, ten nine offsuit. That, that we just don't have.
I mean, you could count combos if you really wanted to be like.
Yeah, he definitely has more combos there, we don't need to count.
Yeah, if you go into the ranges tab, you can check trips for each spot.
Yeah, let's do that, that's.
First we choose an action. I think check.
That one chip.
I'm kind of with bet small, I'm just. But checking is fine, though.
Check makes the exact same amount as that bet, yeah.
Yeah, but let's check out the, uh, the little range viewing option, Pete.
Now, when we count the nines, we don't wanna count just combos, we wanna count combos divided by total combos.
Right, so you gotta look at trips, how do you isolate trips?
Go look at the, go look, look at the top of the range, that's them.
Yeah.
Either or not.
Yeah, so if you look at, if you go to equity buckets, you have it under simple, maybe if you go to hit that and make it advanced, I think.
Uh, it's actually done by like where the hands is at the, towards the bottom right corner, you can change that.
Oh yeah, maybe that's where it is.
filters.
There it is, there it is, there it is, there it is. Okay, so six points.
Six, six percent of the range.
That's in the big blind, yeah, so now you go to the small blind. So in the top right, click small blind node. So in the top right, click small blind node. Six point six compared to.
Ten points.
Ten point five.
Ten five.
Yeah, but that's a person better of their range, that's not total combos.
That's all the, a percentage of the range is what's important, not total combos. Because you want to know how often, uh, you know, what are the odds that you're up against at this time?
Yeah, well, that's the same, I mean, we're saying the same thing, just different language.
No, Louis was saying that Louis was saying the opposite.
Well, I understand what you guys mean.
He was counting us raw combos, and that's what I was stopping us from doing.
Yeah, yeah, but visually, that that big spike, that step function on the right, the big step. Where that, uh, you have the equity on the far right. That is, uh, that is why we're behaving, that big line straight up, this is why. Yep, because of the nine, that's why you see this, the, that's why we don't just range bet small, that's why we have to check some of this.
Okay, that's why I like to check this exact time, because we can, we can like realize good equity in position, is equity in position with, like if you peel a seven off. And then we can just start betting like we don't want, we're gonna get check, he should check raising a lot on this board, right? If, if we're betting.
Well, from a range perspective, like a really good player, a heads up player, Mike, yeah, definitely. They should just be, uh, they should be hurting us there.
Yeah, 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 which is like, I like, I'd I'd probably bet me like. Queen four, queen four off, so queen, like me just like bottom of range and top of range, I'd be betting and then. Just try and realize equity with some like. That some kind of equity hands, you know, like good shot straight goes, whatever, back door, I just like check back and see what turn comes.
It's, uh, I always screw this part up. Like you have to run it again, but.
Without building the tree?
I think so, I I don't really remember all the time. I thought there was like a button in the browser window, where you can just say like run reset strategy or something somewhere.
In the node lock windows, no?
I think, I think. I haven't done it in a while, so like you, you see where it says O O P locked P F R. Solution, I thought there was something here. View options, you, uh. Yeah, you don't want to revert it. View options, settings. No, I'm not seeing anything here. Okay, I think you're running it again. It says it's locked.
Now it's locked.
Okay, maybe we just didn't click something before.
I must not rebuild the tree.
Yeah, don't rebuild the tree, just hit go, I guess, maybe that's what it was.
Hold the four, what, again? I got scanned again.
You got the gutty, man, I guess it just wants to like call and hit a seven or. Turn into a bluff on a lot of rivers.
It's gonna, this is gonna be your fault from this point on.
I I'm not playing this like this, by the way, I'm like, I'm outie. All right, well, you got a bluff bud. You got a bluff bud, yeah, so.
Turbo jam. Turbo jam, yeah.
All right, nice. Did he fold a straight?
Don't think. I opened it on flop.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah, 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 eight, seven.
Yeah, it was just an open in there. All right, I like betting here.
Why?
Three to straight, you got an overcard. There's a lot of good cards you can keep barreling on, that's pretty much it.
No spade, don't bet. Okay, okay.
Blind versus blind.
That small blind like sticking out the spot, oh.
Bl- bluff jam for it all.
Hmm, negative goes righter.
Yeah, it's a fold. I'm just range betting this type of texture a lot.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, seems good.
JK, the seven and ten.
Yeah, no, connects too well with his calling ranger. The ace, though, I thought we would bet around, do we not bet most of the time? No. We only bet with a spade. Oh, yeah, this is more where this, but like wanting to, a spade on. Look at this, all of this is spades. Do you bet two nine, I will the kings or nine, it's spade. We need, we need an ace or a spade, what about tens? Tens are not really betting. A little bit. Okay. You know what, it makes sense, because you know what, in them spots when you do bet flop. And then like, if you know, it's, so sometimes you'll just get arrow down by bottom pair because you're not polarized, like he's like. He he's just betting too much on this kind of board, so. And they start airing you down, but I mean, it's good. So number one difference, when we don't have a leaving range for the small blind. We're sizing up a lot from the big blind.
I don't remember what the flop action was, um, in the actual hand, you can't scroll back down and find it, can you?
I cannot.
Okay, what did we do on the flop before?
Well, he checks, in fact, it's on us.
Yeah, what did we do last time on the flop? Did we check back?
Um, no. Yeah, 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 and the, which, or which, which board we're talking about? Uh, yeah, we checked back and then he bet six, is that it?
Yeah, that's right, he bet big and then we, we went over the top, but it was like. What was the card? It was like a blanky card, I thought. Maybe a do, maybe a deuce of hearts?
Was it the heart?
I don't remember, to be honest. It was something he he bet large on the turn and then we just, um. We jammed over the top with second pair. Maybe you should just pull the hand back up and we can kind of walk through it, I don't know what else we'll do.
Was that first one? Was it?
No, 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 eight, nine, four, there it is, that's it. So you can say study this spot. Or yeah, yeah, okay, so. Check, check, and then you bet seventy-five on the five of diamonds, that's right. He bet seventy-five on the five of diamonds. So he'd have to bet sixty-six, which is a reasonable size. And then our response with ace eight now. Pure calling, all of our eights, pure calling.
Because he didn't get rid of the nines.
Because he didn't get rid of the nines, and he very likely has nines in this large betting range.
So.
Hypothesis confirmed.
Yeah, 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 when we saw that, it was like. A G T O. Abomination, kind of. Okay, here, you need an ace or a spade, easy.
Bluff raise. Do we bluff? I don't know, man, it's actually, it may not be a bad one, hear me out.
What are you doing?
We need a hard here.
Hear, hear me out, hear me out.
Hard to call.
Hear me out, hear me out, we're blocking the nuts on both ends, like you're blocking eight, nine, you're blocking king, queen.
And what?
What kind of value is he taking a one big blind bet with?
A weak ace.
A jack.
Right, so hands that we would benefit from putting a lot of pressure on, maybe? I don't know, I. I, the presence of the flush draws is a little concerning, okay, so maybe that would lead me more call, but I do like raising this sometimes.
He's betting one here because he's spot controlling, because he's planning to call it down.
Where are the bluffs coming from then? How about, let's do, let's play that game?
Hearts, spades. The same hand with the heart or a spade, I say we go for it.
Oh, bro, it's like you got too much. Oh, if you have one heart or one spade, sure, okay, fair, that's fair, that's fair.
That was just call.
Right, so if you see some of it here now, if you see some, if you have a harder spade, it's definitely gonna be like a party.
Blow with a spade or a heart.
It's definitely, yeah, look, if you're blocking hard and spades, if you got heart and spade, it's just the nuts, like you're just bluffing. And if you have one, it's like half frequency, so yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, okay, maybe you've turned this into a bluff.
No, thank you.
Everything bricks. You unblock all of the flush draws. He he could have hearts.
Yeah, you you raised against both straights too, yeah, I like this.
You guys are crazy, what do you guys want to do, stuff?
I want to have stuff because I don't have the, I don't have the heart, Louis, I don't have the heart to call and be wrong.
I just fold, how about, what's wrong with folding here?
Nothing, nothing, obviously, nothing's wrong with folding.
Jack.
Okay, here's another interesting one, you got nine, nine deuce. Kind of want to protect my equity.
Well, now we know has more nines.
Yep.
Check.
Nope, too good.
Negative.
Negative goes righter.
Got to call you with a lot of worse ace high and king high here.
Value betting, huh?
And there are all kinds that. But not that one.
Check out.
You gonna go double small or you gonna check?
Yeah.
You can't polarize, you just can't do it.
Rivers.
Yeah, we got, we got lots of showdown here. We're still ahead of the ball, but it's hot.
Oh, man, I'm kind, I do, okay, 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 are we ever bluff catching this?
Not without a spade.
Yeah, fine, let it go, it might bluff catch, I don't know. Yeah, there it goes.
Oh, my goodness.
Not on my watch.
Not on my watch, exactly. I don't know what kind of fairy tale, look at that. Did you see? We had him.
And no one is gonna ever do that to you.
Not that size.
I don't know, man, I I've seen some South Korean flags that, uh. Have obviously studied that node.
Uh, see, South Korean network. It's a good place to develop right now.
Uh, okay, so.
Jack's a good card for us, we might even size up to twenty-five percent.
But we have a pair of threes.
Yes, doesn't matter.
Maybe you bet small, yeah, maybe, oh, well.
It's a mono phone, we get the best one.
Double small or check?
No, the board pair, we check. Board pairing is very bad.
That board pairing is very, very bad.
That board pairing is good for us.
Yeah, we got King high, I'm good, I'm good. What? Get out of here, Pete, bluff, you got a King high, man, shut it down.
Either.
Slow it down. Your, your value got counterfeit, your hand strength got reduced.
We're still ahead of his hand strength, though, range wise, it's blind versus blind, King high is good. King high is the new ace high.
All right.
Hallelujah.
King high is the new black.
Uh, I'm just gonna bet small here, ace ten, five is good enough for me.
No, we gotta see bet here.
We failed, so it's time to get out.
If you don't see bet, you just relinquish.
Ace high, rainbow, there we go.
Ooh, um.
Gonna continue a lot here, this is not a spot we're gonna want to bet very often.
I'm really leaning wave the white flag here because of the texture, he's gonna be very condensed around that ten and ten and seven. Um, we do have some turn cards where we can take, we can start taking a really polar bluff line also. So.
Also gonna wind up with the ignorant end of the straights when we get those cards, though.
Yeah, I'm saying like a three would be okay, a six is gonna be problematic sometimes.
Yeah, like the only card that's really good is a three.
An ace, ace is good.
Ace is okay.
About the ten and the seven, it really connects well with whatever he calls with, right?
So, yeah, that's kind of, that's kind of why I'm leaning towards just check my four high.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, if he checks, we're gonna have, okay, just, I'm out, yeah. What are you thinking?
The the five pairs, we are, we're the big line here, we gotta block her to the five, what is he gonna do? Watch him, oh my goodness.
Guess, guess with a.
Oh, my goodness.
Call with a reasonable hand, never would have seen that going.
Absolutely destroy us.
Oh, my goodness.
Uh, ace, five, six, rainbow is gonna be a bet small for me, dog.
You know, I might check back.
Definitely bet first to the six.
I do like the bet.
Oh, good, now I can check.
Nope, Scotty.
You want to double barrel this, Galen?
Bro, you guys have value, this is value.
I'm checking.
This is marginally made value, marginally made value.
I think we check here.
Be checking.
You can get maybe one street on the river if we want.
Now we have a bluff catch, when you bet.
Yeah, on that river, I don't really want one street more, I just want to check or call sometimes. I think it's better.
Perfect bluff catch.
You're gonna let him see a showdown with his pair of sixes, and you're gonna regret it.
You wanna raise?
No, it's too late.
We're gonna call. Why? I'm gonna call happily, I mean. Very small, I fault the ruins.
No, just call, like you don't need to turn like a marginaly, like middling hand into a bluff at this point.
Just call and win.
The value was, did he had on, oh, you see he had a pair of fives. The value was on the turn, boys. Uh, this is a check.
Jack was on the turn, Galen.
Yeah, but I mean, come on, come on.
Got to find this forty percent.
You don't have to.
It's not a lose slipper, I agree with you.
You don't, you don't have to find it, don't have to. These are G T O lies. Um, I'm checking again.
We, we really haven't improved at all.
Show it down.
Now, now our hand has just gotten worse, this is cool.
Show it down.
Just checking straight. Check and win.
Got him.
Uh. Uh.
We can bet here, we have the spade, but the nine and the eight connects really well with his range.
They do, but we have the spade and a ten, we have both.
You can, you can, yeah, you can hang on.
Too good.
Flush, three to a straight, two overcards, eyes up.
Why does it want to go polar, though?
Because we're too good here, and he connects too well with this.
Okay.
What you do with pocket tens?
He's gonna have lots of cards between six and ten, and so. He's gonna be able to defend very easily unless we bet big here.
Yeah, that's the verbiage I was trying to get across in my mind, Peter. You need to be really polar here because. He, you're making him, his life really easy with all of his draws, otherwise, his seven, tens. Is, is four, sixes. Is seven, eight, stuff like that. If you don't bet big, they're just never gonna be indifferent, they're just always calling.
Also, something we see a little bit, it's not perfect, it's not always. But on this board, you tell, tell yourself, what would you do with pocket tens, and then very often. Hands that are close to it are gonna mimic it, queen ten.
Oh, that makes sense.
Queen jack, queen jack suited is gonna play a little bit like either bucket jacks or bucket queens. Then queen jack as well, so it's not perfect, but it's a little bit of a thing.
Yeah.
It helps to see if you're gonna go polar, what would you do with ace nine here? Probably a big bet, right? So you know that you're checking a lot and betting big a lot. Then when you don't have the suit, you check, and then, you know?
And do we have any overbets here, at all?
I think it's just thirty big blinds, I think it's just going pot.
Yeah, pot, pot is about as big as it gets.
I think it's just because it's very geometric for two streets. Like you gotta. Oh, dude, I think you're just all in.
Yeah, I thought so.
All in, okay. I didn't enjoy that.
All right, we're gonna wrap it up, thanks a lot for watching, everybody.